All right. I'm not sure who wants to start this. Tracy, Jackie?
It's good.
Okay. Tell us where you'd like us to start with. Jackie, please.
Commissioners, once again, I have handed you a lot of papers. But I could tell you, this first bundle, the colored with the county the county courthouse on top. These are the departments where they had additional requests that we went in and filled those additional requests into their budget that were not 1% items. And so you will see that you can basically add them to your workbook there, but they're broken down by department. The sheet or the sheets that contain, basically, it starts with the expenditures and then it's got the long colored sheet. That's where we sit currently with all of the changes that were considered, added to the budget worksheets, with the exception of a few questions that we have. There were two payroll-related questions in two different departments. One department where they asked for an increase to the individual, an individual salary. Another one was an increase in job duties that are being changed in another department. The question that we pose is, will you consider raises across the board? Or did you want us to include those two requests into the budget? Question number one. With that in mind, you also have a worksheet. And I apologize that I did. Actually, I hid a lot of the columns. And I apologize that I didn't piece it together. But this particular document that has employees named on them contains the information if we are going to consider using CARES funding to appropriate to these employees that worked during the COVID process. And you can see, basically, within the worksheet, the rate calculated was $200 a month. And if an employee worked one month or two months or 15 months, you will see that under the total column, that's the number of months that they worked at the $200 rate for the total. Plus, the FICA gives you an overall total for all employees. Actually, it would be the third sheet here There were questions raised or discussion in calculating these numbers. Is what do you do with a part-time employee? What do you do with interns? And so that's a discussion that the commissioners need to determine. But within that discussion, we had to build from somewhere. And so basically, what we did is we took any department that already received funding. If it did not equal what a full-time employee who worked the full 15 months was, and they did, we provided the difference. If they worked full-time, it was the full month, the $200. If it was part-time, it was at half. And if it was interns or hourly, it was a quarter. And so we don't know if that is the scenario you want us to build on. But that's this worksheet. The other question that we have has to go with how are we going to budget funds in Title 25 in the intergovernmental budgets? That is a big question. And I know that Kurt is working, but whether or not we'll have a contract in place with IMH. I only have $175,000 built into that line item. And there's a potential that it could be more. And so a decision has to be made with that particular line item. When we talk about 1%, there was discussion about with Commissioner Richardson about providing any funding for the mosquito program. Because you will see in part of the correspondence that I have provided to you, there was discussion from Dave Whitman that basically they'll be somewhere in the vicinity of $58,000 short for spraying mosquitoes. And then if we appropriate our funds, does that include department heads? And so if we want to start with, basically, the general fund, I guess, the two questions or the three questions that I have is Title 25 and salaries. And then the two individuals that were that or two departments that requested additional salary increases in their departments. And Tracy can speak on revenues if she, since she has more up-to-date figures before we go into discussion of the questions that we have.
Hello again.
Hi, Tracy.
So on the revenues, I did do a couple of dates, all for the betterment. So no, no shrink in any revenues down, thankfully. The first one, I am discussing with Chelsea, the deputy assessor, and also getting confirmation through Grant as well. I did increase my property tax collections by 6%. I previously had calculated in a 3% increase, and this, I did a 6% increase. They, they are estimating just a little bit more, like 6.288%. But I think you guys know me well enough, probably, maybe not Sue, but I tend to be conservative on those. The next one is in working with Rob. He deemed that there might be four projects that we could reallocate the or pay ourselves as a contractor on various road projects. So I built in $100,000 for that into the revenue. The one item I had missed was the HR MOUs with the fair board, the library, and the airport board had increased slightly, $35 each. So I added $105 for those. The health insurance reimbursement, we did have a and we'll have an increased expenditure, but we're equally offsetting it, 70,000 increase in revenue to us, $70,000 increase in expenditure for a net change of zero. And lastly, we do have the warrant bill, which we do pay the libraries and the fair boards portion upfront for them. And then we deduct it from their monthly mill levy level funding payment. And that will be an increase of $4,828. So including the, I shouldn't have included the 70,000 in my math here. Let me just quick take that out. That would mean an increase of revenues of $282,906. And then there's some cash balances I did go through and change as well. Just as we're getting closer to the time, I can kind of get closer to my estimate on those. But that, I think the biggest change was 1%. And it went from 26,000 to 69,000, I believe. Any question?
Mistress, do you want to head down the general fund path? Talk about the individual salaries that there's seems to be the first place to start. Are those outside of our salary schedule? What, what's the genesis of those requests?
One request was the other request was job responsibilities. I can't speak on behalf of how they write that here.
Are they in the narrative that'll, either one of those?
They, both of them, actually, both of them spoke to them in their budget presentations. And it's all, I mean, all transparent, not a new secret. One is in courthouse. We avoid a request to impose
Friends.
And the other is in the county assessment office for years to change in job responsibilities. Since we know whether to build that in, not knowing if you're going to do any across-the-board increases like this previous year, or not across the board.
Like the cost of living percentage raised.
It wasn't even the cost of living last year, it was a flat amount.
It was, it was like a stipend.
No, no, it was where you give each department an allotment to use how we stop it, whether it's merit or cost of living or whatever.
Right.
That was
About 91,000 or something, maybe 90,000. Do we have any idea of where Roy is in his pay band? Is he at the upper end, lower end? Does anybody? Thank you.
That's a good question. Oh, I would like to say with respect to Title 25, we should budget 175,000. It's always been because without a contract in front of us, I'm not, I'm not against amending the budget when we have a contract. It doesn't make sense. Especially since we know the commissioners' accounts will have enough to deal with that. Because I wouldn't allow to just pull a number out of thin air.
Right.
When we're not part of the negotiating.
Paul said, I'm not sure what year we're paying for. Is it this one coming up for the last two years or? Would be nice to know that.
She is working with additional building. And she believes that we have another $50,000 so this is the year if we have the funds to pay for
Well, there used to be some years where we didn't get to the 175. But I think that we paid 175. Maybe I'm wrong. Or maybe we just build, got billed up to that point. And then, and then they stopped billing us. Was it, did we actually pay 175 at the outset?
No, we did not.
So they would bill us until we?
This fiscal year, we're paying for invoicing that from 2015, '19 and 2019, '20. And for 2021, today, we've only paid $69,155. And so when we have the $50,000, we're still due, we'll pay $119,671.74 for this year, '22, '21. So that would be approximately $55,000 less than the $175,000 contract that expires on 2/30 of the year.
So what's interesting to me is that they can bill, to me, I think the contract said they could bill up to 175. That was like a hard stop, like a not to exceed. And then maybe the rest went into the, you know, the indigent or not never collectible column in the, you know, in the books. So, so it's weird that we would pay more than that, right? Especially if they didn't get us bills in a timely fashion. You can't carry, can't carry that forward through multiple fiscal year budgets. I don't really know how to deal with that. But I don't like it.
Right, right. Seems unreasonable, actually.
It does, it, it doesn't follow the contract is the issue.
Yeah.
So we would have to decide if we want to fight with them for, you know, for not following the contract, for billing in excess of the hard stop on the contract.
If they can tell us the process and make that process reflected in the contract, what we're going to pay, right? If they have bills that don't get paid to them for two years, we should know that upfront. And then maybe we can figure out how to pay for that. I don't know how you would pay for that. But it'd be nice to know what the, what they're running up against for us to get bills that are two years old.
Well, if they hit the hard stop, I would even say, even if they're not going to get paid, they wouldn't be allowed to send that bill on to us.
Yeah.
Right, because it would be a violation of the contract.
Right.
In regards to your question, so the maximum pay is $60,562.50. And he's currently at $60,000.
So there's 562 bucks left in that band. Mistress, what are your thoughts about that? Right. But that, in my mind, that calls for a different conversation. And then you're in your band and we have maneuverability. But if you're not, you're asking for a bulk of that band, that's a a different conversation. And whether we need to adjust that band or?
Right, whether the stepping grade puts an art, puts an artificial limit on that. Because they get the responsibilities, they'll change. Or maybe they do, but there's, it's hard to measure.
Well, and you said kind of a precedent, right? When you move outside of the band, for one, that should be afforded to everybody. Or a read.
Well, we make it so the stepping grade doesn't have a reason to.
Right. I can see myself to 562.50. I'm trying not to be cheap with it. But I don't know that I can see myself to 5,000 for the mere fact that it blows up the salary schedule. And whether we need to reclassify Roy or that's a conversation that Christine should have with us or have with him. Not one I feel like we could figure out here today.
But I agree with her on all points. We have to decide whether that's the appropriate job classification.
He said eight years or something. But I don't know if that's, that's what I wrote in my notes.
But we've done some basic, you know,
Maybe not.
Cost of living pushed everybody.
Right, two, okay, so that's eight years, okay. Does want to put that two years.
Well, I would be happy at this particular moment to push him to the top of the band. It is job classification. I'm fine with that. The question is, and I would like to circle back.
Yeah. Could be budget 562.50, whatever that, top of that band is. And that, but it's, give us a note to have Christina review that. Okay, that's one. And then the other one, it's changed duties. So does that move them up? Does that move them over?
So that's job classification related to GIS, I think.
So, and I don't know. Sorry.
The problem is that in the absence of the department head, who has the authority to decide what duties are and described them? That's an HR thing, right?
Right.
The job description would have to be modified before you could assign it places.
Right, yeah. Can we move past that then, I guess? Figure that one out coming. And then you asked about raises across the board. Before we head to that point, we're there. So this was to kind of, in my mind, to try to make whole people that, so public health had gotten raises, is my understanding, for dealing with COVID. And so this was to help other people that didn't get those raises. Other public health people in here that had got a raise the first time, that got an additional raise to this one. And does that make any sense?
Didn't they get raised because they're state employees?
It was hazard pay. And I don't think it was meant to be a permanent.
So it's not a raise, it's a?
It's more of like a stipend kind of.
Hazard pay. Sounds like this, this one is a hazard pay or stipend?
Yes.
The one that they got from, by being in public health, was that a hazard pay-stipend?
Yes. It wasn't meant to be permanent, is my understanding, is that correct? Not craft or yes, unper?
Yes.
So, so does it make any sense to, for people who already got hazard pay, to give them another piece of hazard pay?
What we're doing is just making it so it's fair. So if they only got 150, they get brought up to a similar level. Is that right?
So that every employee is treated equal.
Okay, so they don't get an additional hazard pay. Okay, okay, thank you for answering that question. And then I see some weird amounts, like 203 or 202, 204 and 5. What are those? Under the rate? So like on the? Okay. Super.
It's funny, the department, you guys come in here and when we get the budget sort of nailed down, then it's all this kind of stuff. And it's not very fun to watch. It's fun for us who are doing it, but if I had to watch this, I couldn't do it.
347, 786. Alrighty, thank you. Chelsea, you're here. And you have a question about increased duties. Could you explain that a little bit to us? Somebody's, the department budget was uh an increase or increased duty, so an increased salary for increased duties?
Yes, so uh we were requesting an increase in salary for Mo. She will be taking over the admin positions that Karen will be letting go. With Karen's new promotion, so she will be, her responsibilities will be drastically increased. No, no, we would just like to give her a pay raise, so she would be going from a property specialist one to a property specialist two.
Okay.
And that just needs to be built into the budget, makes perfect sense to me.
Yes, so right now, she's just a front office clerk, um she does mobile homes, change of addresses, things like that. She will be moving back in the mapping department, and she will be doing ag deeds, taxural corrections. And then she will be training on some of those mapping, um the easier mapping things that Karen does, so that we have. A backup if Karen is out or something were to happen to Karen.
Super, thank you, Jeff, any questions?
So did we already deal with? Karen's position and its responsibilities, I can't remember, we dealt with that, right?
Yes.
It is the process. Somebody wants to do, move from a project specialist one to project specialist two. Do they work with HR? How does that process if we're not at the budget? How does that thing work?
So I, what I was planning on doing is I haven't given Mo the raise yet. Um I was hoping to have this start July first, and so I was waiting for that to be approved in the budget, and then. And once it was, Christina would sign up, sign off on it, and we'd move forward at that point.
Okay, and do we only move people up during the budget part of the year, so? Let's say somebody wants to move from project specialist one to January, project specialist two, January. How, how does that process happen? Does it happen at all?
I think it's dependent on whether that department has the budget to cover it for the. Remainder of the year, I mean, because I moved somebody up in my department in January, but I had the budget. But I didn't have to ask.
Okay, okay.
Oh, right, so it would have to do with. I mean, the, the labor budgets are bare bones, right? So. So in some people's budgets, they don't have the, the space. To promote anyone, unless they come and ask us for that allocation. But without question, people improve in their value in the department all year long. Maybe they attain trainings or levels of expertise, particularly in the, in the assessor's office. That would warrant a different. Title, a different place on the pay scale, but. But if you don't have it in the budget, then how do you, how do you do that, right? So.
I guess for me, I always try to foresee what's gonna happen, um this is my first year doing budget, and so. I don't exactly know the process, but for me, I'm trying to predict kind of where my office and where my staff will be. Within the next year, so that I can build those numbers into the budget, like, for example, Nick Robinson, he is a field appraiser one. But he will, by the end of the summer, if we can get a third field appraiser hired, um he will be helping train that third person. And so really, I would say by fall. Maybe end of year timeline, I would like to move him up into a property specialist two, so I've tried to accommodate that also into this year's budget. So that I would have enough to allow me to do that.
Yeah.
So you kind of have to predict what's happening, I don't know if that's the right way to do it, but.
Yeah, I, whatever we did was standard, I just don't want to do something, I'm sympathetic for this. But I want to do it standardized, so that we know what to expect, and you guys know what to expect from us going forward. Jackie, or Tracy, any historical perspective on that? Is that how it's done, essentially?
I just wondered if you give consideration, like we did this past fiscal year, for a. Salary raise reserve, if whatever that number is built into the budget. Yeah, those funds could be used at that time to appropriate the.
Yeah, and what is the difference between what's, what's a dollar amount? You know.
Like for Mo, I'm requesting a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
So.
Increase, so whatever that is.
Eight hundred bucks.
Yeah.
You guys want to deal with this, or you wanted to just go right to, uh, do we want to do salary raises across the board, and that might answer this question?
Well, so to me, if we do salary raises, I think that this is a separate issue, really. So if we do salary raises across the board, what we're doing is we're taking the whole step in grade. And lifting it up by some percentage, right, so all the numbers will change, all of the ranges will change. Because it comes up from the bottom, everything changes, right? That's how I would view it, if we were gonna do like a cost of living or some, you know, something like that. So to me, I think that this is, and these types of requests are still separate from that.
Yep. But for me, I think. The money was to go to the department, and we should probably put a little bit of guidance on that. And so whether everybody got one percent or whatever, or we handled the Mo situation and let that. Of flexibility with the department head or elected official, and just say, hey, these are. Because there probably are gonna be people in the same office that at the very bottom of the band, in the middle of the band, at the top, upper end of the band. I don't think you make that more equitable by just giving everybody one percent more where they are in the band, I think you try to move everybody towards the same place in the band. So if everybody's at seventy-five percent of market value, you move those people that are thirty percent of market value up towards seventy-five percent, if people are ninety. They're more adequately paid than the person at thirty percent. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, and I don't think that it's an exception to that. To me. If you give a base percent and a half, then you're changing the range of the band, right? So. Does that make sense?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, you're putting that amount of money into that program, a hundred percent or whatever, but you might be changing. My salary zero, but might be changing your salary three percent, um because we might be both in different spots in the band, right?
Yeah, I get what you're saying, I. I was just thinking about it and the concept of. Changing the, you know. You understand that, I'm saying.
Yes, and so how did you guys use it last year, when we gave you twelve hundred bucks or whatever, or whatever it was? When we allocated, we didn't give anything, right, it's the people take the money, um we allocated that. Did you just give everybody a same percentage across the board, or did it just depart, vary by department, or? How did that all roll?
I personally used it for my new people, like I tried to, either at six months or one year, bump them up. Like a hundred bucks a month, just as a, hey, you're, you're doing good, it's working out and everything. I used it for that, and then some of the other employees, um I have a couple that, you know. Exceed my expectations like twofold, and so they probably got a little bit more on a merit basis. Than somebody who, um it does not perform as at that high of a level.
Okay.
So that's how I did it in my office.
When a boy reaches the six-month mark, I do increase them, actually, I don't. Increase fifty dollars, and then at a year, I do an additional fifty dollars, so that's a hundred dollar increase. In the beginning salary, and then I did the same thing, this year, we had a. Situation where some of the workload increased, especially during election time. And with babies' accidents, and so I based it on merit as well as, but everybody we see.
Yeah, and it's, Chelsea, it seems like that's what you guys did.
Yeah, we do, uh, with our new employees, they get a hundred at six months because they're halfway through their certification. And then we do another hundred at the year mark, because then they're temporarily certified. And then um with our raise reserve, we use it. Based on increased workload and merit.
You're basically taking them from a training range to an actual weight.
Yeah.
What would the thoughts be if we did go down a path of increasing, and, and we had. A narrative associated with that, is that too micromanaging? I just see a disparity of fifty bucks at six months and a hundred bucks at six months, and I really would rather it be standardized at six months.
I thought I was standard, but obviously I'm not, so I, my name is like yours. Oh, listen, it's either fifty and fifty or one hundred.
Oh, okay.
I misunderstood what you said, I thought you said a hundred dollars at six months. Oh, no, no, I'm standard with her.
Okay.
So we're out of the norm, but I said, we do it because our staff has to take classes and they have to be certified to do our job.
But to me, that makes sense, because we don't have any certifications, there's no treasurer training program besides us.
I wouldn't want to micromanage at that level, I just want um them to have an allocation that makes it so that they can. Deal with the, the needs of their, you know, employees. The step, the stepping grade made enough structure.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Yes, the training, so the actual classes are paid for by the state. But the travel and the hotel and the food is all paid for by our department.
Amanda, what would be the cost of living adjustment? For if we just, whatever it did was last year, added that to the salary, do you know what that is? Yeah. On a thousand dollars, probably. Did that cause any dissension? Except in my head. Yeah, yeah, I just don't, if it's working, I don't want to mess with it, um if it's not working. I kind of like to mess with it, to make it better, but I don't know, so um any feedback? Seems like you guys are all fine with how that, Rod, are you fine with how that goes?
Actually, for reasons for all of our employees this year. But because we're actually employee short, and we went um basically three months. Being too pretty short, that money's already in our budgets, so. Discuss a little bit about.
You probably need your budget to reflect what the cost would be if you were at full staff.
Right, right, and, and it's. The two that retired were, their salaries were significantly higher than what we have right now, so. It's gonna take a while to build up. Employees, but I think that's part of the money that we get. Every year is that, how that was supposed to work. Yeah, that hundred thousand or whatever. Right, so we're able to work within our department. So for example, I got, you know, a couple guys that really had to step up because they're. Working guys to, to be in short this winter, fortunately, it wasn't that winter. But they haven't stepped up responsibly, so. We're also doing. The ones with the lower salaries, we're getting an increase in. Uh, we've actually placed one, we're only one short now, and we're still advertising, a huge problem is. We require CDLs, and there's, the guys that have CDLs now are, you know, our salaries probably too. You know, unless they're, they're. People that like to come to work for the county right now, probably those that like the four hour, or the four-day. And our shifts instead of the seven-day.
Yeah.
So the reason you don't ask for more money is because the entry-level people that come in behind the ones that were paid, paid higher. You're able to use that savings to deal with all of the movement.
So, so the one thing that I could troubleshoot maybe a little bit is. We hate to have a department budgeted in raises, and then we give a raise, and the department not budgeted in raises, and then we give a raise. And creating that disparity, um I don't know if that's happening or not. You have a, a thought about that, like, no, I'm just saying. Let's say somebody budgeted in a raise right into their regular budget, and we approved that budget, and then we came to this part of our day, it's about one percent across the board.
Years before, um we were pretty much stuck with that salary, so there wasn't very many raises, well, probably raises given at all.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, now since you guys are putting in a little bit into the pool. And like what he was saying, in our case this time. Because the two that retired were the higher paid, so it gives us a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, as we hire someone that's less experienced.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing what you explained there, Rob, I really appreciated it.
I think it's, it's, in our department, it's changed the last couple of years because of what you have done to the.
And then when we give that money, do we give it based on a full staffing, so probably at six, but it has eight positions? And we gave twelve hundred bucks, do we give it at eight positions, or do we give it as six positions that are currently there? Okay, perfect, perfect, okay.
Yeah, I think that if you fund, it doesn't mean they're gonna use it, right? I mean, some places in government. They spend their whole budget, and to me, that seems like kind of how you're thinking, but. You know, the sheriff's office, there's always been turnover there, like, there's never been full staffing. So they have a budget for full staffing. But when they have positions that aren't full, they wind up spending some of that on overtime, or, you know, it, it just has to get used differently, right? So I. To me, I don't really see an issue there, I think that people know how to do what they do in their departments, and. How to value the merit and the, the needs of their employees. What's fair and right, and I kind of like that description, I wouldn't have a micromanage that at all. I think the only thing that this commission would do. Or could do separately from the, the allocation that we do. Is um if we were going to do a cost of living raise, that would be across the board, and it would. Change the entire step and grade scale, and that would happen independently of the individual decisions and that pool. That the departments. Use, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um if, if we were gonna consider something like that.
Question, the only department that is able to increase in their salaries is this issue. Everybody else, yes, we may act the amount appropriate currently.
Okay. And what is the increase?
Yeah, go ahead. Christina. Um, is that accurate? I thought Road and Bridge had increases as well.
Christina. Rob's increases are within the amount of money that was allocated in his original budget. Plus the increase that the commissioners uh allocated for twenty twenty-one. So he's got half the traditional funding.
Okay, thank you.
And so do we know what the sheriff office, what that raise is?
It's his proposed step and rate plan that he presented.
You're right.
That's now starting with the for year one.
Yeah, that would be a whole. A unique different thing that happens separate from all the other county employees.
Right, right.
As it relates to parity within law enforcement.
Right.
So on to make us.
Yeah. At some extent, Rob has some of that going on too with CDLs. Um being and I'm sure everybody in their offices if. Got a good hand and they can make more somewhere else. Did we do last year the the ninety one thousand to take off outside the sheriff's office? Was that just?
Sheriff's office just in nine. Yeah, nine sworn, yeah, nine sworn once. He was out of the court, so that looks. Uh Harvey, it's in.
Okay.
Just the non sworn.
Okay. Okay. Does that pay policy continue with with? With sheriff, with sheriff apple hands? And then if we approve sheriff apple hands is, would that just not be an increase from last year to this year? Or would there be a built in increase? Okay. So my thought is to do it is we did it last year. Um doing the twelve hundred or whatever it ends up being. Twelve eighty six something or whatever and getting it to the department heads and letting them. Decide how they want to do with it. So you have any thoughts about that? And then and then that that would be on top of this three thousand that comes for hazard pay. Okay, does that give you direction?
It does, Mr. Chairman. The only good question, does the hazard pay include departments?
I think it should. Absolutely. I don't know why we would make that distinction. The only distinction I could see us making is elected officials because they're. Cause elected official salaries are set by the rules.
Is this department that's figured into this? Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's easier to add or to take away the added.
That's nice working with you, all of you guys. It's really nice to have the answer already figured out before we even asked a question. So.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Christina, please.
Um, I have another follow up question about the hazard pay.
Sure.
My my understanding is that it's for all employees. Does that also include, and I apologize if. You guys answered this already because I'm a little late to the game. Does that um also include all of public health that already got the hazard pay? So are they getting that in addition to the hazard pay that they already received?
No.
Okay, and then um does that include the state employees that the county pays a portion of their salary?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so Amanda said that the state should have taken care of that, Christina. Through their their own uh processes and so they have not included the state contract employees.
Okay, and just for further clarification so that everybody's on the same page, it does include our grant funded positions, correct?
Yes, it does. Um there will be one grant. If it's qualified, there's certain things that are, yeah, can't be matched with federal funds. I think all of ours qualify.
We believe all of them qualify. There is one question on one position um with the grants, Christina.
Okay, it's my understanding the last time we gave out monies um a year's past that all of our grants positions qualify. I just wanted to put on record that that's the case, that they all qualify as well, because I know there's been questions on whether or not they would or would not receive it since they're grant funded.
Soft money positions.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so does that give you guys direction? Okay, and then it comes back to Chelsea. Do we move that or to the assessor's office or do we think that we've taken care of that? You're all for it? You're for it? Okay, we're for it. Okay. That's just those general fund questions, I think. And then I'm not against the hundred seventy five as a placeholder for a title twenty five unless you are too. I suspect we're spending more, so um maybe you have a reserve account handy, maybe hopefully not, but. I can't imagine it going under less than one seventy five, but.
We'll just have to amend the budget.
Yeah.
Go to the commission account or, you know, reassign them.
Okay, and so that takes us to the one percent mosquito funding program. I gotta tell you that. If everybody's not paid up in that program, I have a real hard time funding that program and, you know, I read the. The bulletin on it. Isn't isn't this the one where the begun by ranchers and it sprayed. On their wet acreage and there's a hundred dollars per person and then twenty five cents per wet acre or something?
Yeah.
This was a program we didn't begin. This was a this is a county mosquito program and. I am sympathetic and I will be helpful to that. But not to cover somebody else's obligations. Um I just don't believe in that, so.
I agree. I was trying to, you know, today we approved the emergency insect management program grant. And somehow in my mind, I can't separate those two things out. I think that what we approved today is the. The match for the the profit, the the mosquito control that we do with cities. Mosquito shop. Um is that true? Yes, is the question.
Yeah.
No, the city is part of the testing.
And this had the the correspondence in our package today with the mosquito on it that said. You know, we have this much money, ten thousand fifty bucks coming from Eden test. We have thirty four thousand coming from the emergency management grant. This from contributions and we're going to be at that point, I thought it said forty one thousand short or forty seven thousand short. Um but it's begun in the seventies, if the postcard is to be believed, by farmers and ranchers. Take care of the mosquito district. There was a hundred dollars per applicant and then twenty five cents or something per acre sprayed acre. And they spray in conjunction with the city's burial spray. So I'm not sure where we sit with people being involved in that program, but if only fifty percent of the people are paying a hundred bucks and the twenty five percent per acre. I have a real hard time um until we get to a hundred percent um of people paying and uh. I'm not against it, um but. That might be a metric that I that that might be a hill I want to die on. Um because what what I see is if we continue to spend more and more money. So there's less and less people being involved in the program and the next thing you know, we have a program that we did agree. I don't know. I don't, yeah, it's not our program.
We we would, somebody from. You know, from that. Board would have to be here to answer those questions and that would be. Probably a gut anecdotal answer. I'm sure that. That the ones who pay always pay because that's kind of how things go, right? Um and I would guess that there are some who kind of wander in and out of the paying group and then there are probably some that never pay.
And there's probably some community good because little buggers probably fly over everywhere and get all of us.
Yeah, the problem is if you don't pay, you still get the benefit of. To a point, right? Because if everybody paid, the benefit would be different, but mosquitoes don't know what. What Meadow paid and what didn't. They just go wherever they go. So participation is key, right?
Yeah, well, I remember last two years ago, I believe, we had a community partner late this time of year, twenty thousand bucks. And now we're up to forty some thousand dollars or. Now, I don't know if this is the cost of of the equipment and the springs going up that much or if that many people are falling out of the program. I would. Love to talk to whoever wants to talk to us about this from that district or whatever it is. Um. Right, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it would be like, I don't know, a match. The only way we could change it is if we set up. The county contribution as a. As a match to some something they do. So if they get fifty percent funding, we allocate X. If they give a hundred percent funding, we allocate Y. And, you know. Proportionality in between.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But I don't know if we have time to do that this year.
Yeah.
Um it it's an interesting concept. In other words. You can't access the county budget unless you put up first.
Um, yeah.
And what and the ratio, whether it's dollar for dollar or twenty five cents for every dollar, you know, that that would matter too, right? That's not something we could go into. In this budget, I think, with two weeks left in fiscal years.
Well, we can just make a, yeah. Okay.
So I think that's part of the funding coming through, yeah, and the last one too, which is putting more pressure on the districts to put in more money.
Nice to see you, yeah. Yeah, so we can put the money in, but then somebody can make the case for whatever type of money they need and we can ask all these questions. Um.
Yeah, I know that the the spraying costs, the aviation and, you know, goes up a little bit and then. The treatment, you know, the chemicals used goes up a little bit. But most of that gap, the growing gap has to do with. Them falling short of what comes from the states aggression is doing. Would we want to backfill that or? Backfill it with conditions or not backfill it at all?
Right, exactly. I'm with the latter, the or the one in the middle with conditions. Yeah. Yeah, and I think Eva makes a nice point with the incentive, right? The more people that put in, the more the county will put in. Yeah, we all do better. We're all doing better. So um. Do you have a number? Um that we should put in there? I mean, we can always budget. We could put twenty five thousand bucks in there and then if we need to amend it, we can amend it. Um I I hesitate to do fifty thousand because that's what's being asked for. Um and so.
I was looking at the correspondence that they provided Eva and he said the deficit is about fifty eight thousand dollars. I'm not building the number in there as of yet.
And that came from, I can't leak his name to him.
It's, well, it was, he got the information from Dave Whitman, but it actually was from uh. Yes.
John Whitstone, yeah, yeah. No matter how much I dug around, it kept saying four oh four.
On their their flyer, because I brought it up because I'm in that district they live in, but um their projected loss is forty three thousand. Does that not include their newest grant amount?
What what is the grant amount listed on that that flyer?
Um from Wyoming E I M P grant, it's eighteen thousand thirty three dollars seventy eight cents.
So they show it already.
So they have eighteen thousand. Is that just a big laramie? Is that what what's? Because we we had thirty four thousand come in, I think, to all the districts. So I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I think this is big laramie, right?
Yeah.
John Whitstein.
Yeah, yeah. So the fifty eight that you're talking about is for all the different ones?
I'm guessing, yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's.
I think if we're gonna do it. This year. We would have to pick a hard number that we can allocate and just let it go. But and then during the year, we would have to go back and create some sort of an incentive program where. They have to, they have to. Attract more people in the district to get more money from the commissioners, right?
Well, I'm guessing that that number includes Cadillac spraying program and so maybe it's time we do a Honda. Spraying program and apologies to everybody who drives a Honda um so that we can incentivize getting people moving and being part of that solution. I really, I really hesitate to put sixty thousand dollars um to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. So what number? Thirty thousand? We can always amend it. How about thirty thousand? Thank you. Eat that one around.
Thank you, Mitch. And then we have to remember to go back and have a conversation.
Yeah, and if we could invite somebody to that's to tell us what percentage of people pay. And uh we'll figure out some sort of match program that makes that happen. Um I think that covered everything that.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Can I get clarity in regards to the sheriff's office? Are you approving the first year step and grade plan or the entire?
Can we approve the entire plan? Can we approve the entire plan when that essentially? It lays out something that future commissions will inherit.
I understand that that was the way it was presented and correct me if I'm wrong, um but um. I just want clarity so that.
I'm okay with approving the entire plan. To me, it there's a caveat in there and that is that. It's not a binding approval. You know what I'm saying? It means that we start on that. But but any commission could decide they're gonna blow that up, right? I mean, it would it would set that in policy unless somebody changed their mind. In other words, that would be something that would. That would be something that would churn along unless a sitting commissioner said. No, we're not, we I want to re redo this, rejigger this, so. I mean, I'm fine with the whole ten year plan personally. I, there's no way for us to. To help this organization get. Where it needs to be if we don't do that. The the only question is long term, long term sustainability.
Well, and equity ability, right, equity. So if if the sheriff's department is getting five percent raises every year and the rest of the county staff is getting one percent raises. That becomes an equity issue to me. Um and so. I guess I'm all right with the first year plan, part of the plan, but I'd like to know, I'd like to think about it some more. Yeah, Rebecca, go ahead.
The plan is behind the ten year plan, the reason why we did it ten year plan is to. You were basically taking the CARES money, that was a lot to the sheriff's office, and using that with the standard to the year. So the money is there. Um for the ten years, and then once you get to there, we have to figure out whatever we can do that time.
There were other CARES Act money, however they came in, but we haven't done that for departments, if I'm correct, right? There was uh other CARES Act money that we haven't did as detailed as you have been. And so, not that I'm saying that's a bad thing.
No, that's just where that where the ten years came from and where the money was supposedly coming from in our. No, that's just where that where the ten years came from and where the money was supposedly coming from in our plan.
Yeah. The only reason or the the only place that I would. I guess take exception to what you said is that if. Some group of employees are being paid. In the same salary ranges as that, you know, as that job. S says it ought to be paid in, you know, out in the real world, that. We know that our law enforcement. Is way behind in pay parity. So to me, I don't see the. The problem in the equity because. Because we're trying to get pay parity with that profession itself, right? So. So I I would look at it a little bit differently for that reason.
I understand. I and I get where they're coming from and I do think training and people are where you should spend your money. Uh, the turnover is a really. Uh, expensive thing um, to have happen. But I I think having different salary schedules for different people is confounding to me a bit. I think there's a pay ban that would make the sheriff's office comparable to their peers. They could fill in with a larger uh, county pay ban that would be consistent with their peers. I guess I don't really know the historic reason why the separation occurred. So it's it's easier to deal with a one percent across the board if everybody's in the room, then one percent here and the two and a half percent scheduled here. Um, I don't want to cause any problems uh, amongst employee groups and employees. Because I think.
Sure, if it's office clerical, those jobs are similar from the department to the department.
Right.
But law enforcement is its own animal. And so it has to be compared to. To salaries outside our organization. More than to be compared to salaries inside our organization.
Yeah. Well, maybe attorney's office, you know, yeah, uh, but we don't have a separate salary schedule for attorneys.
Well, and the reasons they leave may not have their salaries.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, so so I'm fine with this year's part of it. I would like to find a way to incorporate what they would like to do into a larger. Organizational step and grade. That didn't have us have this conversation every year, right? Um, because I seem to have had this conversation, at least personally, out loud for now the third year. Just don't feel comfortable. Having a group outside of. The rest of the other group, right? And and we should be able to accommodate. Their step and grades by figuring out market, what is market for a first year officer comparing. The city, the university, and to start a market evaluation of each position, right? And then if you add one percent to market. Well, so. It might start at seventy thousand at at the university. We'll just have to start there or somewhere near there.
Well, our entire stepping grade. Is based on the market. Evaluations that Christina did for all of the positions, the only ones that don't fit are the sheriff positions. They're already outside of that. Um, they're too low, right?
Right.
So everyone else is paid similarly to their peers out in the world except for the sheriff's department. So to tie them to a group of employees that are already paid in parity with their similar jobs all around, you know. So. So the point is that it, like, I understand your sentiments. I just am not sure that they work because that would assume that. That the sheriff's department is already being paid in parity with. You know, would that job pays out and about?
Oh, I'm not assuming that at all. I'm just saying it's time to do some more work um, to get one salary schedule that. Does a little bit more of comparing market. Um, across the board. So if if Rob is having a hard time with CDLs and the average CDL starts out at sixty grand. We're probably not gonna get too many people paying forty. Um, and so we might need to look at its. Pay bands too.
Um, yeah, I live in that world and for whatever reason, the CDL has gone up. And actually, it's gonna get worse because they're gonna make.
A lot of regulations.
They're gonna make you have to go to a truck driving school. You can't get taught. You know, on the job. So I on the job train all kinds of CDL people. And and they end up better than the ones who come from the truck driving school. And anyone in that business would tell you they'd rather train their own employees than hire somebody from the truck drivers. But apparently, the truck driving school lobby is very powerful in Washington or whatever because. You they're gonna federal DOT regulate it. Well, none of them can pass a drug test, so you don't want to.
To what you guys would do. I would, my preference is to prove the first year of it and then do more research. Um, with Christina as we direct the research now. If you guys feel comfortable with the tenure. Well, then, you know, the being in the minority is you're used to it, you know, so.
I'm fine with it either way. I think that you can't go very many years without reevaluating your. Your pay scale anyway.
Yeah.
And the jobs that are in it and the demand for those kind of people. So.
I hope not to be here. Yeah, you two might be here. I'm pretty sure I'm not gonna be here. Yeah, so is it that's amenable to you guys? Um, and then I might give Christina some direction. I don't know if you're still on. No, she's not. I'd like to just have this conversation. Yeah, yeah, because I would really like to fold you guys in to a system. That is equitable to you guys. Um, but also says when we go to make a raise, we make a raise across the board to everybody and we don't have to operate two different worlds. So you guys would probably be helpful to us to understand that world. And I do appreciate the fact that you're trying to get people at the market because turnover is expensive. Amazingly expensive and you guys are in safety and we can't afford that. Turnover. So I'm sure Sheriff Applehands will have something to talk about um, with me, but that's all right. I mean, I think this is a conversation to have and I think it makes it easier to from accounting perspective. What would you? Would that make it easier, Amanda, to have the systems folded into one type of step and grade if that were possible? Okay. Okay.
So the direction I think is that we fund the first year of Sheriff Applehands's plan so that we can. And then we will probably have this conversation in next year, but with different and maybe better.
I'm hopeful to the rest of the year, a couple of times, so that when we come to this time next year, we all know exactly what we're gonna do, whether it's. Do it like they would like it, like they have it right now, or if we have some other type or a hybrid of the two ideas, so. That gives us a year to try to figure it out.
Mr. Chairman, um, there has been email traffic between Steve Hamer and myself. Estate in uh, ladies' absence regarding the diversion program. Um, if the uncertainty of whether or not it's going to be funded is unknown and in fact, the. They won't know until June thirtieth, which was is almost too late. Um, it is such a viable program within our community. Uh, we have paid out approximately thirty one thousand dollars this fiscal year. I would um, respectfully ask that you allow us to build in at least thirty one thousand dollars. Uh, in one percent sales tax for that particular program. In the event the grant is funded and the funds are there that we won't, um, I mean, and there's other sources of. Uh, revenue, then we won't have to spend any town funds, but I would hate for. Our juveniles to be at a loss, um, if we did not put any money into a line item.
I'm sure as I don't have a problem with that. You guys.
Are you saying the thirty one thousand that we've paid so far was not us doing pass through money, but it came from from probably one percent? Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, I will update you. We've involved Kurt. This is someone with Kurt. Um, and so, um, just in a, pardon me, in an email chain today. I mean, uh, this chain started last Friday when the state wanted to know what everybody was going to do. And of course, they wanted to know by five P M with an email going out. Um. The latter part of the day before. And so we tried to get the parties involved and I think this is ongoing. Um, discussion, but uh, if you will allow us to allocate funds for that, that is the only other. Question that I have. I asked Tracy if there were any questions she might have. Otherwise, um, with your permission, uh, we will refine the numbers. We will prepare the. Um, advertisement for the proposed budget that will go into the newspaper. And um, it will allow each department to see um, and to make sure that. What they ask for in is in fact in their budget. And hopefully, when we come to the special meeting, that there will be any minor changes or corrections that need to be made. So that um, we continue to be as transparent as we possibly can. Everything is in the P drive that allows anyone to have access to um, see where we're at and. I don't know that I have any other questions unless Tracy might.
Only one. The mosquito was set to come out of one percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just have that one question that I'm not sure Kurt can answer. The intern program, right? Growing from forty thousand to a hundred thousand. Just because it's always been a hundred thousand and it's been budgeted at forty thousand. Is that a vision that he's going to? Do we want ten to fifteen interns or do we want? One intern per attorney? I think that's a really important question.
You know, I asked him the question that I haven't.
You have correspondence if you would be your worksheets or having a termy.
Yes.
Have kids, um, his response to your questions as well as breakdown of how that all works within this. So.
In these colorful little sheets?
Colorful sheets.
Yeah.
It is. It's after, it's the parthens fifteen and then afterwards you'll see his email to you with justification of. What he uses the interns for.
Okay, so that answers that he wants to keep it at forty yet if I just is how I read that. Okay.
Yeah, what did he have a budget in the budget?
A hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I mean, I understand that.
Yeah, I just didn't want to see this grow without us understanding why it would grow. If there's a reason for it to grow, great, right? But if there's. Not then not great, so.
Well, so is your budget separate from the personnel, you know, from the salary line item?
Yeah. And and just for the future, so people could figure out, is it gonna get to a hundred fifty thousand? Is it gonna get to two hundred thousand or is there a cap on this thing? So he's thought about. I'm good with it. Anybody else have anything?
Well, at some point, I guess if you're gonna transfer. Certain types of work to externs and interns, then that would be reflected in the. In this, there would be a corresponding reduction in the salary line item. In other words, you're getting more work for less money.
Right.
And yeah, or whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I don't, but you can't look at one side without looking at the other. And the truth of it is, I haven't looked at historically what the. Salary budget was for the. For the attorney to see if any or the or the actual expenditures to see if any of that is actually saving money. That cost is transferring across.
Yeah, we were paying that. We were just not budgeting it, it seems.
Right.
And so now we're budgeting it and probably gonna pay it, but at least that's a better way to go about budgeting, uh, that's not budgeted pay it. I guess, or or.
Because of the vacancies that they have in full time county attorneys, that's how the. Officer being covered because there was only forty thousand budgeted and through me, there was a hundred and eleven thousand.
So it so it means that a line item was overspent, but not the budget itself.
Yeah. But one would say if they had a full staff, they would have expended the budget too.
Sure.
Yeah, so if, I'm hopeful that everybody will have full staffs that remain in place uh, for years, um, so.
Yeah, so I think that what that means is that it's not an absolute. Hundred thousand dollars, say, increase because that money was coming from the salary.
Yeah. Yeah.
So maybe they took forty from the line item and sixty from the salary budget. It looks funny, but it isn't.
Yeah, and and I just, for me, just personally, I like to see what I can expect in each line item.
Sure.
And I would rather not have to try to divine what. What um, Tracy's hiding in whatever, right? I mean, because you certainly could and we fool me, I'm sure. So anything else before we go? I do appreciate all your work, guys. I really do. Um, this is, we don't deal in this world. I don't deal in this world very often. You know, running the road and bridge budget or a sheriff's budget or whatever budget. And so being. Quick with it to get it to us and then being uh. Easy narratives for me to read to understand is really helpful to to making decisions, hopefully they're worthwhile to you guys. Ultimately, that's where it goes. So hopefully, we can give you the tools to be accessible for the people in the county. And uh, I don't know, Sue, any thoughts of your? First year, I know it's difficult. And so we'll have a better idea after Pilp comes in, um, whenever Pilp comes in. And so not till July, we'll know exactly where we sit, but. Hopefully, this is good news to to your employees and and to your departments and uh. Or duh.
Did we cover all the little asterisks and? You know, the things that you had in your notes, Jackie?
Yes, yesterday we spent the whole day going through all of the notes and comparing what. Each other's notes were and we were able to put the amounts in the correct, whether or not it's one percent or direct gate or. Um, general accounts and we all were able to get it all balanced out to what was proposed or what was initially. Proposed to where it is today. So yes, I believe so. It's a work in progress and I'm sure when we finish here, our plan is to update still the need for the raises and. Um, the changes that you have discussed today so that we have as well. A number in all of the various departments and budgets and categories that. We need to have for the approval or the consideration of the work for.
Okay, we'll continue this conversation two weeks or a week from Monday, right, the twenty eighth? All right. Think cool thoughts, I guess, for the next three weeks or whatever. And uh. Thank you for joining us and we'll close up the work session. thank you for joining us and we'll close up the work session. Um, we'll stop the share and stop the recording.